We'll start with a prayer by Vice Chairman Vowell and I'll lead us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for everything that you do for us each and every day, for being with us, for guiding us, Lord, most of all, for saving us, Father, giving us the wisdom to follow your guidance. Please forgive us where we fail you and we don't follow it when we try to go at our own, lean on our own understanding. Be with us here tonight, Father, each one of us, each heart, each mind, as we do what's right, Father, in your eyes for your people. All this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we'll have the appearance of citizens. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, you can do so now and just state your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Stephen Mead, live at 104 Walton Lane, Oak Ridge, Tennessee. I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a commissioner at this moment. There's been a lot of discussion about voter ID and I've got a very interesting article from a publication called Infromus. I just wanted to cover a couple of short things that might surprise you, that certainly surprised me. The U.S. is an outlier among world's democracies not requiring voter ID everywhere. Of the forty-seven countries in Europe today, forty-six of them require government-issued photo ID to vote. The odd man down is the United Kingdom. About half the United Kingdom does require it, but the whole nation does not. They've already got a bill about to pass that will make it all forty-eight European countries require voter ID to vote, with picture voter ID. When it comes to absentee voting, thirty-five of the forty-seven European countries, including France, Italy, Netherlands, Norway, and Sweden, don't allow absentee voting for citizens living in the country, period. Another ten European countries, including England, Ireland, Denmark, Portugal, and Spain, allow absentee voting but require the voters to show up in person and present photo ID to pick up their ballots. And another thing is the thing of buying votes. Buying votes used to be a big problem because until not that, more soon than, more recently than you think, we didn't have secret ballots in the United States and people would get paid based on how they voted. That was going on a lot of places. Okay, well, how are things working in Canada, just north of us? Canada requires photo ID to vote. If the voter shows up at the polls without a photo ID, they're allowed only to vote if they declare who they are in writing and someone in the working poll station, actually working at the poll station, could personally verify their identity. In Mexico, voters must present a biometric ID, an ID not only with a photo but also a thumbprint. Voters have indelible ink applied to their thumbs, they take their thumbprint, and that's to make sure they can't vote another place. Absentee voting is prohibited even for people living outside the country. And interesting enough, when they really stamped out and made it hard in Mexico for people to vote, voting went from an average of fifty-nine percent voting to sixty-eight percent of the people voting when they required voter ID, which they, before that, had not done. So anyhow, there's some things going on around this, Canada, Mexico, Europe, and around the world, and the other democracies. Voter ID is not unusual. And I personally believe the voter ID is a necessity to have free elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on anything not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to approval and correction of the agendas. We'll start with the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion, Commissioner Jaeger, do we have a second? Does that approve the consent agenda as presented?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Do we have any, Commissioner Jaeger?
I'd like to add the road superintendent to the agenda right after number five.
Five A, road superintendent. Any other additions or corrections to the regular agenda? We have a motion to approve as amended. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any other discussion on the regular agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, next we'll have the public hearing report. Vice Chairman Shane Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Six o'clock this evening, we had a public hearing for the rezoning property located at the intersection of Lake City Highway and along Meyer Road, tax map zero six five from C1 General Commercial District to R1S Residential District. We had one speaker, Mr. Chairman, but no objections to the rezoning.
It looks like we've got a motion by Commissioner Isbell to approve, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion on the rezoning? Commissioner McCamey?
Yeah. Danny, can you tell me why this was, this request came forward? I mean, what?
Here's our.
We have a couple of developers here. They are considering developing this property. As it's been stated, it's currently zoned, excuse me, C1. In order for them to get the lot size, lot sizes that they would want to get, they're asking for R1S. The majority of zoning around it is R1, but there's a specific mention of seventy-five hundred square foot lots where there's access to public utilities, water and sewer in R1S, where the lots can be reduced to seventy-five hundred square feet. So they're specifically asking for that zone, but it's to do potentially a residential development.
Okay, is that not in the city limits?
It's not, and more than likely, that's why that property was probably zoned C1, because it's right on the Clinton City, you're just right across the line. And of course, you have H&amp;H Body Shop, you have a gas station, and there's also another business there as well that's just kind of right across the road. So more than likely, that's why that parcel at one time was zoned C1, because there could be, you know, commercial potential there. It was probably, that was the thought process, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Danny, what was it, hundred and fifty-five, is that correct? Hundred and fifty-two?
These gentlemen here would probably be better to speak to that, but I think it was somewhere around a hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty-two?
And they're all stick-built homes, so there's no modular trailers, anything like that.
Yes.
That's definitely needed in District Four. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's go to the board and vote. You vote? You just want to vote yes?
I voted yes.
You voted yes, we'll put him down at yes. All right, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all for the public hearing report.
Thank you, Commissioner Vowell. We'll move on to five A, the road superintendent. Gary Long.
Yes, I'd like to present you with a inventory.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wondell and seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Just accept that and we'll put it in the minutes. Give it to them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next we'll have committee reports. Start with purchasing report. Catherine Ajamary, Deputy Purchasing Agent.
Good evening, everybody. So, Section A, contracts approved by the law director, we have one. It's a grant for EMA submitting for your approval.
Motion by Commissioner Denenberg, seconded by Commissioner Mead to approve. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Next, under Section C, other business, we have a request from EMA to donate thirty fire hoses to Little Ponderosa Zoo submitting for your approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That was the only item under Section C that needed any action. The other one is just informational. So Section D, this was new business in the purchasing committee, but they've all gone through and reviewed and approved all these items. So I don't know if you want to approve these three items as a group or individually.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell.
As a group.
Approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And those are all the items I have.
Questions for Catherine? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move to budget report. Robbie Holbrook, Finance Director.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Okay, as you all know, we didn't have a budget meeting this month, Thursday, the regular scheduled meeting. We canceled because of snow. And then, when it was rescheduled, we didn't have a quorum. So all the budget amendments have to be approved by commission, just as a majority, not by two-thirds. So a majority vote will approve amendment. I'm right about J word? Yes, as long as it was on the agenda and all these, we're not adding anything new. So I just wanted to, and also, I gave you all, each of you all, a hard copy because I thought it might be easier since you're approving everything tonight. So everybody has a hard copy of this agenda also. And I'll get right into the cash and fund balance report. For the general fund, unassigned fund balance, eight point nine million. Total fund balance, fourteen point eight million, and cash is sixteen million, sixty-four thousand, two hundred, which is up about four million from this time last year. So any questions on cash and fund balance?
Commissioner Jaeger.
What's in assigned funds?
Assigned funds, the three million, three point one million are recently, in fact, the last two years, we have moved some of the unassigned fund balance, commission has to, for capital projects. It's just assigned by this board, this body. It can be unassigned as, as just as easily, but right now, it's mainly for capital projects.
Okay, thanks.
You know, also, the finance committee approved the, I forgot how much of a percentage of the fund balance.
Twenty, was it?
Or the rollover.
Twenty?
Twenty, twenty percent, yes, that's it. We did that last month. So, and I moved another one million.
Okay.
From us, to, from fund balance.
I knew it was being right at two, so I didn't know how.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what happened then. All right. The sales tax report, the county as a whole was up nine percent, three point nine million in November from three point six last year. The county, Anderson County's portion went down, reduced by three point six percent, almost the same, four eighty-four, two eighty-nine last year, four sixty-seven, three twenty-seven this year. So sales tax is starting to level off a little bit, but it was going to be hard to maintain those numbers. I mean, we're seeing the internet sales tax, so I think we're still going to see really good numbers, but we're going to start to level off some. Any questions on the sales tax? Commissioner Fritz.
On the sales tax, I was sort of hoping, being the Christmas season and especially with the new stores opening in Oak Ridge, that we might see a slight increase. That's why I'm sort of curious to hope, a little high expectations.
Yes, and December's numbers aren't in, this was, we're a couple of months behind. So these are November. We should see December's numbers next month.
Oh, okay.
So hopefully, we will see some increases there.
You can go over there now, and I've been telling my wife quite a bit about this, that you can go over there now and you can see the number of cars in the area up there. So you can see what the number of shoppers have increased greatly in the area. And so that should hopefully show an increase in the sales tax coming to the county. Because I think that was a good move, you know, getting these type of stores into this area. And hopefully, they'll keep the influx of people leaving, Anderson County going towards Knoxville.
I agree. Any other questions on the sales tax report?
Can you explain or have any idea why the out-of-state number fell so drastically?
I can explain that, but it did go, it went with what, a thousand dollars this?
Yeah.
I cannot explain that. I mean, it had been forty-four, fifty, forty-seven, and a thousand dollars this month. I didn't, I didn't ask that question because I don't really know who I would ask that question to, but I will try to see if I can find an answer on it. Okay, if there's no more questions, I'll move on to the budget amendments. I'm still going to use the summary and try to take them as a group. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any. But group one is the consent agenda. These are just transfers. There are three of them. Seeking approval as a group or I can individually. If y'all would like to take these individual, I'd be happy to do that too, all of them.
Motion by Commissioner Denenberg, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge to approve as a group. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, group two appropriations by the school department. There are three, four, five, and six. Seeking approval as a group.
Motion as a group by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I was looking under the information on number five, I guess it is.
Yes, sir.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
It said architectural and some other things. Maybe Dr. Perry can answer, but.
I can explain that too.
The nurse, what's that?
They're going, they're, they're doing architectural services for all the nursing clinics at the school.
Oh, nursing clinics.
A new addition to Norris Middle School and improvements at both Clinton High School and Anderson County High School gym.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, the way I read that.
I actually called Julie on that too, because I didn't, I read it the same way you did.
Yeah, I thought he was building the nursing clinic or something.
So she explained it to me and I wrote it down on one piece of paper, because I thought I might get a question about that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under group five appropriations, non-school, there are four, seven, eight, nine, and fourteen. Seeking approval as a group. I'd be happy to take any individual or answer any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Jameson as a group. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, on the finance drug court, I was looking at those funds. It seemed like it's, I don't know, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and seventy-two thousand in the budget. Who manages that? I see this is for an increase in pay to catch up.
This is a grant.
What's a grant?
It is a grant from the county. She, and a raise was not put in for her because we went by the grant fund, funding, and this is putting that four percent raise in for.
So we have somebody that manages that fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Randy Walters in my department manages all grants, but he works with Winnie Gadd in the drug court, yes.
Thank you.
She's done it for several years, too, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, group six appropriations that affect the general fund, unassigned fund balance. There are three, ten, eleven, and twelve. Seeking approval as a group. I'd be happy to answer any questions on these, because some of, one of them is quite large.
By Commissioner Smallridge as a group.
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote no as a group because I'm opposed to number twelve, the one point five million. So I'll vote no on the entire group. Thank you.
I can pull that one out if you'd like.
I think we already have a motion to pass as, as a group. I was just letting the chairman know and the board members know that I'll be voting no for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wondell. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. It is as a group, yes. Nine yes, five no, motion passes.
Okay, the only thing I have under miscellaneous is the fire truck resolution that was sent to the budget committee by Commissioner McCamey in last month's commission meeting. And also in operations this month, Chairman Anderson made a motion to approve the fire truck resolution contingent on the budget committee finding the funds. Well, I had three or four plans as far as the budget committee goes. One was handling in, each year in the budget process, but we have learned since that we think we can possibly use, not possibly, we can use ARP funding for volunteer fire department trucks now. So I would like for us to discuss this in our next workshop about using those funds for, if that's what the committee would like to do. I think that that's a good use of the funds. It affects every, pretty much every county citizen, and we also buy for the cities. So it's every citizen, you know, not that, it's clearly your all's decision, but it is, we can use those funds for purchasing the fire trucks.
Sorry, Commissioner Wondell.
I just wanted to share with the, with the board just my opinion on it. I'm concerned with, I like the idea of getting everybody a fire truck, but I'm concerned what we're going to do after ten years. Once they get their fire truck, this, this is going to be done. And the fire departments are still going to need a truck in ten years. They're going to need another truck in twenty years, in thirty, thirty years. My opinion is, is that we would be better off to put three hundred thousand dollars in the budget and just buy a fire truck every year and just keep replacing them. The problem lies is when we don't have the money and we quit doing it. We put it out two years instead of every year. And that puts everybody behind, puts them in a, in a bind. So I'm, I don't think I'm in favor of using ARP money. I definitely have to talk about that in a workshop, but it wouldn't hurt our budget as much to throw three hundred thousand in every year. Put it in the budget. We can budget for it and we can work with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner McCamey, do you want to state your motion real quick before I go to Commissioner Mead?
Well, a referral. Referral motion to send it back for, for the workshop and for the budget.
Budget committee and finance committee.
I think finance needs to look at this because.
One thing about the finance committee, I will say this, we cannot borrow the money for these trucks as a bond, because the way the resolution's written up, it's, it's a donation. I mean, we're giving the money to the volunteer fire department, they're, they're making the purchase. So we can't, we cannot borrow the money. So it has to either come from unassigned ARP funding or in the budget. Or like we do with our own capital needs with the sheriff's department and EMS, we use rollover money.
Well, you know, I was accused last month of being opposed to this, and I want everybody to know that I'm not opposed to it. I fully support it, but I do have some questions about, you know, the money and the, talking about bulk purchase. But at the same time, the resolution says they're not our trucks. So how can, you know, one fire department going to sign a contract for four or five trucks? Or who's going to sign that contract? You know, if we're not going to be doing it, then I don't know that any one of our fire departments will want to be responsible for four trucks or five or whatever it takes to get a bulk purchase. But I've got several questions and I, I think the workshop would answer some of those questions maybe.
Commissioner Mead.
Well, I, I mean, he's, he's, he just made a motion. That's what I wanted to talk about was whether we buy one truck now or ten trucks now, we still need to put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year into our budget to renew that money for when it's time to buy new trucks, be they, for whatever reason. And so I think there really shouldn't be any debate about, we, we need to have in the past put away that kind of money every year, okay? And right now, I think we've got a chance to kind of get ahead of things a little bit, still put the money in each year, but, but get some trucks that are better pricing now, because I expect that the trucks that are, that are three hundred thousand now are going to be three fifty next year and four hundred the year after. And I just think that it's not a bad time, while money is still fairly cheap, to get ahead on this and then do the right thing, and that's put money into a fund every year, so that when it comes time to replace equipment for the fire departments, we have that money. If we don't take care of these fire departments, those people eventually are going to not want to volunteer and we're going to get stuck with many millions a year running a fire, a county fire department. I thank God for those people that are willing to go out in the middle of the night and be on call regardless of the weather. I think those guys are heroes. And we, if we support them well, they'll continue to feel good about what they do. If we don't support them well, they're not. And I, I think we all know what the consequence of that could be. So that's what I want to say. We need, we need to do, we need to put aside the money for this anyhow every year, even if we buy ten trucks, you know, on a, on a contract to get a bunch of them in. Because you get a bunch of new ones, that doesn't mean you wait ten years to buy another truck. You don't put aside any money. You put aside the money every year and this, this time comes up, because they won't all wear out at once. You've got to admit, on some of the volunteer fire departments, the trucks are used a lot more than the others. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to thank the fire commission for all the work they put in on this. The law director also helped quite a bit. I think we're all in agreement that we need to continue helping the fire departments. I don't think anyone disagrees with that. I think now we've reached a point though, that we're trying to figure out the funding source to be able to do so. We, I know we went back and forth, Robbie's went back and forth with the restrictions on the money that we got for, for the COVID relief. We hear one thing one month, two, three weeks later, we hear something different. And we hear, well, we haven't really decided yet. Everybody wants to help them, but I think we really need to get a, get a good plan, as Commissioner Wondell pointed out, a good plan of how we're going to do that, not only for today, but for tomorrow as well. So I support this motion to send it to a workshop. We can work all this out. And I know it just seems like we're keeping delaying, keep delaying, keeping delayed, but I would rather delay it and get it right than to make a decision, have to go back and change it three or four times. So I'll support this motion. I think it's a good motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And one thing I do want to remind you all of is that we still have, next year's budget has the second portion of Andersonville's fire, to complete the last resolution. We still haven't even budgeted their second part of their payment. So we have to finish it first. I mean, that will be in the budget next year.
Any other discussion on referring this to the ARP workshop, finance, and budget committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Commissioner Fritz.
And when he said they, they get, no, and I was going to look at a February date. This month, in January, was going to be the, the night after operations, and I think we maybe shoot for that same date in February, the.
Because there are some consistence who've contacted me wanting to know when we might have this workshop, because they're wanting to attend.
Okay, well, I can get with the net and get it on the calendar that goes out into the papers.
Is that February fifteenth?
What's the day after operations, the Monday that operations, purchasing, finance?
It'd be Tuesday, February fifteenth.
If everybody's good with that, I'm fine with that.
Six.
February fifteenth.
Yeah, it was six p.m. was that?
And we were actually going to have it at the Senior Center, because I think. And we were actually going to have it at the Senior Center because I think in their big room, I think we could spread out more there and...
Have more public.
I'll have the mayor ask if we can host again next month there. It's also a good way to, we talked about using that space for other meetings and I think that might be a good idea.
At 6 o'clock, Robbie?
I think they're saying 4:30. Maybe it was what we had last.
I'm good with any time.
Cool.
At this commu, at the Senior Center unless we cannot have it there. They may have something planned already.
All right.
Any other questions? And I'll get Annette. We'll also, we'll put that on the calendar for February.
Any other questions for Robbie? Is that all? Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Next, we'll have Dr. Parrott, Director of Schools, report.
Thank you all. It's always glad to come and kind of talk about the school system. I gave out a, kind of a summary of our ESR budget. I had some commissioners asking kind of what we were doing with those funds and gave you a copy of that if you have any questions on that. As you can see, a lot of that money is for the facilities, that, for that, for our ESG project and for the expansion of Norris Middle School. A lot of technology in there for students and for teachers and things like that. So if you have any questions about that, there's some other down at the bottom. There's 369,000. That's for, that's just sitting there in case there's something we need. The one thing that we couldn't use out of ESR, and we have, thank you for allowing us to do that tonight, we couldn't do any architectural fees out of ESR for some reason. That was one of those things. So there's about 200 something thousand dollars in there for that. Couple of other things, I know we're, we talked, had the commissioner ask last time about the Claxton School. We've sent out a survey to Stat, to the community over there. As of today, we've got almost 200 people that have completed that survey and I'll be bringing those results to our school board when we do our board retreat, kind of give them and I'll let you all, I'll get a copy of those results to you all on that one. Some good news, we do have a PO on the safety lights. I want to thank the mayor for helping us on that. So hopefully within four weeks, we'll see a big difference in Claxton and I'm excited about that. We finally for the gym floor at Grand Oak's been, been raped for almost nine months for them to come back and fix the gym floor. They finally got that complete, so things take a long time anymore for some reason. The other thing, this month, the board did a resolution honoring our nutrition staff, our cafeteria staff, and just wanted to take a moment to kind of highlight them. You know, they, they fix over 5,000 breakfasts each day and write out about 4,500 lunch every day and they do it consistently. They do a great job and do it this year at no cost to any of our students. All of our students eat free. And so next month at the school board meeting, we'll be recognizing one person from each school to, that's went above and beyond our nutrition staff. So I want to thank Margaret Burrow and her staff. They do a tremendous job on that each and every day. So other than that, just, just a few things. The staff right now and our students, they're going through COVID and we've had to cancel again today. We worked all day and there was just no way we could cover classes tomorrow. We were going to have about 55 classes that we would either have to double up or if we could find somebody else to go in that class. And talking to my board, they, they made the decision with me just to go ahead and close for tomorrow. We hope things will get better, but we tested over 80 people today and most of them were positive. So it's, it's hit this county school system right now. Knox County, I was in contact with their superintendent too and they are out another day. Maryville went to, their middle, their high school went to remote learning the rest of the week and then Alco was out for the next couple of days. So I think it's just our timing of our, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Dr. Parrott? Yes, not. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Have a good afternoon.
Mayor Frank?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. I have, it's not Groundhog Day yet, but it may feel like it with the three motions that are in front of you tonight. So normally each fiscal year, we will do this, review the debt policy. I'll submit that to you and then we'll get these motions. This is for us to participate in Tennessee ECD Economic and Community Development's three-star program. Well, we already took care of this. I thought I was doing a good thing, getting it done early, but they want the 2022 date on there for the minutes. So if we could do a redo and get each of these motions approved, we'll get that in the hands of ECD with the current dates.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Jamison. Any discussion?
Is this as a group?
If we could get these individually, that's how they like it submitted.
All right, let's go to the board and vote on number one. Motion passes unanimously.
And then the second one is for cash flow prior to the issuance of any debt.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And the last motion is an acknowledgement of documented system of internal controls as outlined on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Dennenberg, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions.
Questions for the mayor? Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I was just curious, I don't, I was looking for the private act number. I can't find it in my myriad of emails, but have you had any feedback from the state on the private act we asked Senator, Lieutenant Governor McNally and State Representative John Reagan to take a look at for nonpartisan, for the commissioners and the constables? Have you had any feedback on that?
I have had zero feedback, no sir. And I have not even looked at, I hate to admit this, but I haven't even looked at what's going before the legislature right now. I've been so local in keeping up locally, but I can definitely reach out and ask.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd like to have a motion requesting the mayor to get feedback from Lieutenant Governor and our State Representative, John Reagan and our other State Representative, his name escapes.
Powers.
Dennis Powers.
Thank you. Mr. Powers and just maybe a letter would be nice, see if they could respond. That would be my motion.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Dennenberg. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Yeah, I think he's got something else. Your questions are different. Yeah. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Commissioner McCamey?
Mayor, you sent out a couple of emails this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Would you expand on those just a little bit?
Sure. And so we've had a, a longstanding safety issue in front of Norwood Middle School, Norwood Elementary School. We have applied with the support of this county commission three separate times for multimodal grants in order to install sidewalks and, and put an island and create better crosswalks and lighting and all of that. And we failed the first two times with the grant applications and this time we were awarded. And in addition, we received a TAP grant for 700 and some thousand dollars. I, I have the number with me. And you all really supported this effort and provided matching funds for that. That particular grant better positioned Anderson County to win that second 900 and some thousand dollar grant. And so we are on our way. These T-DOT projects do take a while, but this is going to be a legacy project and improve safety and be something that you all can be proud of for that Norwood community and corridor. The two amounts are, the TAP grant is 711,396 dollars and then the multimodal is a 95% state, 5% county. That grant award is 942,020. So that's going to do a lot of good work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Commissioner Fritz?
Before you sit down, because I know a lot of people keep asking questions, I appreciate fellow Commissioner Wondell posting something on his site about it, but could you give an update on the convenience center? You know, how things progressing, any change, updates on when it's going to be completed and things like that? Because I know a lot of people are interested in it, so...
I should have refreshed my memory. I know Commissioner McCamey may have the answer on the completion date as Chairman of Solid Waste because I'm drawing a blank, but we are on track. We are not behind and it was, in my opinion, a pretty quick turnaround. So I believe we're looking at springtime, being open, having a ribbon cutting and being operational.
It was April 28th, I think, is the contract completion date, but I feel like, and I think the, in talking with contractors, they're ahead of schedule. If they don't get bogged down with the weather, I think it'll be sooner than that. But the contract, they have to be finished by April 28th.
I know under the existing setup, you go down there at times and you'll be backed up down Clinton Highway, just trying to wait and get into that convenience center. So you'll have a major traffic jam even on, backed up along the Clinton Highway. There's been some comments and stuff, you know, about the traffic problems going to be associated with this new convenience center. I'd like to maybe, hopefully put a lot of the consistence concerns at ease on this because with the makeup and the design of this new convenience center, there should not be any traffic concerns. If anything, it's going to alleviate a lot of the traffic problems associated that we've been experiencing over the years associated with this. I'd like to ask everyone to be patient and look at this and, and look at what's coming and, because you're going to be surprised in how much better this is going to be for everyone and how much easier access is going to be. And I guarantee you that we're not going to have the traffic jams and the backup that we have been experiencing over the years down there. It's been a long time coming and I'm looking forward for it to be open.
Yes, sir. And in fact, it was designed, we changed originally, the design had the entrance at one end. We actually flipped that, did it inverse so that we could take better advantage of that site and stack more people in, inside the fenced area. I haven't brought this up to Solid Waste Board yet. It's been my intention to do that, but we could go ahead and do some preliminary engineering work and just take a look at what it might take to do an accelerated, you know, XL deceleration lane, maybe even just a little small strip. We were able to do that on Norris Freeway for not a large additional cost to the project. So maybe, it might be something if we end up seeing that there are moments, if there are a lot of trailers or something, that would be the only, in my opinion, just watching that site, that would be the only time you might get some stacking up after a busy holiday and if a lot of people are, you know, pulling their tag-alongs there to haul trash. But that's something we can always have in the back of our minds.
The original design says that we can stack 16 vehicles inside the fenced area. I don't think we'll ever have that many there at one time, but even if they all had a trailer, we could still get eight with trailers in there at one time. And the entrance, you can see a quarter of a mile either way. It's, it's on a straight and, you know, there's no, I don't think there's any danger at all or any traffic problem that would originate there.
I'm very excited about it. I think, you know, once it gets open, it gets going, I think it's going to put a lot of concerns to rest.
Any other questions for the mayor?
All right. Thank you.
Got the Law Director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no action items for you tonight unless somebody has any questions on my written report or any legal issue facing Anderson County. We'll tell you this, the Smith case is set for hearing on February 22nd. We have the option of doing an in-person hearing or a Zoom hearing. We've opted for the in-person hearing. I think that's better. But anyway, that's the attorney's trying to file that Rule 60.02 motion, but that's where that case is right now. Any other questions or comments, anything I can do for you?
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll stay on the first topic. We still have the same attorneys representing us on that?
Yes, sir.
Switching gears, we made a motion last meeting, I believe, to, to get the letter drafted for the EPA. Just checking to see if you had a chance to do that.
It's dictated, but I don't believe I've signed it. I've had three girls in my office out, but I'll ensure it's out and give you a copy. There's also a dictated letter to Congressman Fleisham.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other issues?
Commissioner McCamey?
Jay, there's a house out on Johnson Gap that's been condemned.
Yes, sir.
And supposedly last week, it was supposed to be a controlled burn by the Medford Fire Department, but it was still there today. Do you know where that stands?
They couldn't do it. The, it was too close to the power lines. So they're going to have to get a front-end loader in there and raise the structure and haul it off.
Okay. And they're going to do that? And they agreed to do that?
They're going to have to do something.
I mean, I know they agreed to...
I've talked, I've talked to several of them or somebody in my office has. I've talked to one gentleman last week about it. They're going to have to remove it one way or the other.
Okay. I had a question about it and I had a person call me today and ask about it and I had told them that it was going to be burned, but, okay.
Just power lines were too close. They didn't want to take it out. I'm sorry. We'll, we'll keep pushing.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wondell?
Just to follow up, I had something, Jay, I didn't, I asked the mayor, but I didn't ask you. Did, have you had any feedback from the state on that resolution, on the commission?
I've never had any feedback on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Feel free to call me or email me or text. Anyway, stop by. I'm there for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. We have Operations Committee report by Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Meredith made a motion to approve of Resolution Number 22-01-910 to the Industrial Development Board of the City of Oak Ridge to negotiate and accept payments in lieu of add valerium tax.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passes unanimously for the full commission for approval. Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Jamison to approve. And got a comment by Commissioner Yeager?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to call up Daniel, what's your last name? Forget it. Daniel Smith. He's the representative for this project. And we approved this, I don't know, maybe a year and a half ago. When was that, Daniel? Just suppose. Time flies. I don't know.
Yeah, Daniel Smith, 315 Train Drive. From Legacy Capital, one of the developing partners on this project. We came before you, this board, I think, two years ago with respect to the pilot on... with respect to the pilot on the 226-unit development that we are under construction now on. Right now, we're building seven apartment buildings, a clubhouse, and a pool. We've completed three buildings and turned them over and have about 90 residents that are living in those buildings right now. And we plan to deliver one building each month for the next four months, which will bring us to May, and the project will be complete. We came before you two years ago, really, to this day, probably. We had a request, and the reason why we come before this board is because generally under state law, the IDB will get with the city or the jurisdiction where the property is in, if there is a city involved. And when it passes the city, it doesn't really come before the county commission unless there's a retail component to the property. And in that case, we had an acre out parcel that we thought we might want to do a retail development on. And so there is a, there's actually two pilots, one pilot on the multifamily portion and one pilot on the one acre out parcel. And the reason why that is, it's just our lender requires that they lend on only one project, that there's not multiple assets for reasons related to bankruptcy law and what's called a single asset entity versus multiple asset entities. But long story short, we came before you and on the pilot on the out parcel piece of property and for the option to do a retail property. We've abandoned that, even though we did get the pilot for that, that property, and you guys granted us that right. But we are going to do an apartment building on that because we feel the demand and we feel it's the best use for that property. We have since bought an adjacent six acres. The development company that did the mall, Realty Link, they originally owned that tract of land as part of what they bought from the Department of Energy in the City of Oak Ridge when AMSI sold. And they attempted to try to get a Publix or a grocery store on that lot, and they weren't able to do it. So they ended up deciding that they would sell it to us, and we acquired it a couple of months, like, I think, two months ago, we acquired that property. And we are planning to do a retail development on that property, but that's not what we're asking the pilot for. We're going to have a 20,000 square feet or so retail shops up on Illinois Avenue. So it will be up on the road, and then we will have three apartment buildings. And we're planning to have a coffee shop in one of the apartment buildings. And so we're coming to request a pilot related to just the multifamily housing and the retail coffee shop that will be kind of a mixed-use building where there will be a coffee shop on the first floor. And so a lot of stuff is going on, and really, the reason why we're here is because we're requesting that that pilot include a retail coffee shop to serve customers that are not in the apartment complex. And that kicks us into needing to come to the commission, ask for the ability to do that. If we didn't get the support of this commission with respect to this pilot, then what we would be doing is we would just build housing there and we would not have a coffee shop in the bottom of the floor. But we think it'll be a really, kind of a step forward in having a mixed-use building in that area. There's not really a whole lot of mixed-use buildings with residents above retail. And we think that it'd be a great use and it would be an amenity for the people that live in that community, but also to the City of Oak Ridge and people of Anderson County.
Let me, you want to follow up then? So you are going to be building three, are they four-story?
They're four-story, elevator-served.
So that would be in additional hundreds?
It's actually, there's three, so there's three buildings on this pilot request. And then there's a fourth building that's on the old out parcel pilot that you all granted two years ago. So we're going to be building four new apartment buildings. One of them's going to be just like the ones that are there that we just developed. Another one is going to be what they call three-four split. So it's kind of, it has four floors on one side of it and three floors, and it's a basement kind of with a retaining wall. And then there's going to be two pure four-story elevator-served buildings, with both of those will have roughly 50 or 60 units between the two.
So in your whole project, you're in the 340, 350?
370 units.
Seventy, okay, so there's a.
And we really feel the demand is there. Right now, we have leased up 175 units out of the 226. And we, a lot of people are interested in living there, and we feel like we're going to be pretty much, by the time we would break ground on any new project, we would be 100% leased. I think there's just a real housing shortage. A lot of the building since the last recession in 2008, it really kind of, the amount of building starts just didn't stay with the demand. You have a lot of what they call the echo boom, which is the daughters and sons of the baby boomers. They are just now buying houses. You have a lot of people moving into this area. And so you have kind of a confluence of all these things that are making the demand for units there. We think this will be able to fulfill a lot of that demand in the Oak Ridge community.
Well, I've been on the Industrial Development Board for, I think, seven years now, and this has been a really, it's a very good-looking project, I might say.
Thank you.
And in my opinion, we kind of have a multiplier effect because people who might want to downsize will be moving into one of these apartments, and then families will support the schools, you know, larger family units. So it's really, I think, have been a heck of a good program for Oak Ridge, and I appreciate you coming to town.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Commissioner Denenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question, if you don't mind, please. Because I think this is part of my district, is it not? Yeah, thank you. You said that there was going to be a coffee shop. Will it be strictly a coffee shop, or will there be sandwiches and/or other foods that might be provided as well?
You know, our primary goal is to recruit a local Knox County coffee shop to come into Oak Ridge. And there's a few of them that we are kind of targeting. And so the goal is for us to lease the space to a user. And that would, you know, they might have bagels, they might have, but it probably wouldn't be a full-service restaurant or anything like that. It would be primarily coffee and, you know, pastries and things like that. Or it could strictly just be coffee and kind of a workspace, community area for people. And for, you know, there's, I think, I don't know if you know, there's places like Honeybee Coffee and K Brew. There's a lot of them around Knoxville that we'd like to try to recruit. If we had to, we would own and operate our own, but that would be the, not our primary choice.
Now, what would be the hours of the commercial area?
We, you know, it would probably be, it would probably not go past 11:00, 10:30. You know, like what a Starbucks would stay open to. It wouldn't go past that. We would, so, I probably, as a landlord, if we brought someone in, we probably would limit it. I would think, probably try to limit it at 10 o'clock at the latest.
And it would be open to the public?
And it would be open to the public.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Thirteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Commissioner Meredith made a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-01-911 supporting the Rocket Hop Adventure Tourism District, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed unanimously. Forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Meredith made a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-01-909, updating and amending the Anderson County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed unanimously. Forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Jamison, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. This is something we each need to sign. Is that right?
Correct.
Annette, before we leave tonight, everybody signs that? Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Meredith made a motion to extend emergency sick leave for COVID-19 through the end of March, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passed unanimously.
That concludes Operations Committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. Next, we have new business. Any new business? Any old business? I want to say real quick, probably everyone's heard by now, over the weekend, we lost the Museum of Appalachia founder, John Rice Irwin. So just please keep the Irwins and the Meyer family in your prayers. He was, I believe, the county's maybe youngest school superintendent back way before the museum ever got started. So Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate, appreciate that. He was really, you know, he's a mentor, you know, when it comes to, you know, museums and things. You know, I'm involved in the Museum of, the Coal Creek Coal Motors Museum, but he was someone to really look up to. The other thing is tomorrow will be, everybody will be able to order their free COVID test. If you don't have that link, I'll send it out, but I think it's four per household, so the faster, you know, you get on, you can get them. But it's all free. Shipping's free and all that.
Is that something, maybe, Andy, could you put that on Channel 95, the link also? Thanks. Any other announcements or anything? We will see you in February.